Just when I'm over here.
Okay.
Oh, fuck you.
Okay.
I want to do both.
You want the what start?
It's true. We're doing lots of them.
All right. Important question, what did you choose?
All right, see.
Of course.
But you don't have sound.
Yeah, the upper flop and I'm much better.
Good evening and welcome to the August thirteenth. Members of the public who provided with the following methods to watch and participate in this open meeting. Attend in person at the North dumpers community complex and not in. Attend electronically via Zoom to observe the meetings or to speak to an item on the agenda. Watch the live stream by assessing the meeting on the township future page. Submit any comments to the coach division that both provided to council members and report part of each of us record. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge and thank everyone for joining us this evening. We appreciate your participation as we come together to serve the community. I ask that we create a welcoming and positive environment for everyone that includes respect. That we listen to each other with care, speak thoughtfully and engage kindly. Kindness that we treat everyone, council staff and the public with respect and understanding and inclusiveness. That we embrace diverse perspectives and respect each other's opinions. Together we can make this meeting space one where respect, kindness, inclusion are at the heart of everything we do. Behavior that is disrespectful. Aggressive, intimidating. Will not will result in the individuals being asked to leave. And now like to call the meeting to order. Can I have approval of the agenda, please, council attorney?
Move by myself, second by council officer, the council adopted August thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Can you repeat the agenda as presented?
All those in favor. Harry, thank you. I would now like to, I would now like to begin with acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land on which we gather today, the traditional territory, the Haukshung, the Anishna, the Inuit people. We acknowledge the enduring presence of the indigenous people during we share this land today. Their treatments and their contributions to our community. We offer this acknowledgement as a act of reconciliation between indigenous and non-indigenous peoples of Canada. And I'm really pleased to announce that. A retired indigenous NHL hockey player has gone from different. Indigenous areas and made a special team of indigenous players. Who will have their debut at the health organs tournament here at the complex in August. So that's exciting. And I hope a lot of yous get a chance to come out and see it. It's going to be an interesting tournament. So that's really, really good. So let's pause and reflect on the relationships and hope. For our future of the indigenous nation. Thank you. Now, so is there any disclosure, keen interest to general nature of home seeing none? Anything for consideration six point one, report number ten sixteen twenty twenty five. Twenty two thousand and twenty six budget direction and schedule. Christina blocks treasurer director of public services will put by presentation. Christina, please.
Thank you, ma'am mayor. I just have a very short presentation to give today. Speaking of looking forward to the twenty twenty six budget. There are many drivers listed in the report for your consideration, but the four I wanted to highlight today. Were items that are both in and outside of our control, but are very much going to have a huge impact on us. C P P had been nicely trending downwards. C P I, oh my goodness, thank you. C P I has been trending downwards nicely, but just recently it has now started to trend upward again. We are up to one point nine. It was one point seven or if you earlier months. This is based on June information, which is the most recent information that has been published. And if you take out energy, which is one of the most volatile components of it, we're actually sitting around two point seven percent. Which again is above what all of us would have hoped to have seen, but it will definitely have an impact on us. The other two biggest components of our budget are really our wage compensations. And our utility costs. Utility costs are continuing to go up and unfortunately, there is nothing we can do about that beyond where we have tried to mitigate with having more. Efficient lighting or fuel efficiency or looking at heat pumps and other things which we have. Tried to put in where possible and efficient to do so. Our wages are our other largest expense driver. Annually, as people have performance reviews successful, there is a step increase. There has been an annual cost of living adjustment as well as the legislative benefits continue to increase as well. And the last thing that I put on the slide, which is a little new for this year, is the asset management plan. In July, we brought you the asset management plan, which showed that we are facing a significant funding gap in maintaining our assets. And that is part of what is driving us towards putting more money into those capital reserves for asset and in the future. The proposed increase that we are planning to bring a budget for you in the fall is as follows. In total, we are planning to have a five point five tax rate increase after any assessment growth. Fortunately, with the slowdown in the economy, assessment growth is fairly negligible for us this year. But we are looking to see whatever assessment growth we can have on the twenty twenty six roll. We are looking to once again put three percent additional funding into our capital reserve transfers. One percent, we'll just call it a general increase in a whole bunch of various reserves. One point two five into infrastructure and point seven five into our facilities. And then that would also allow us to have a two point five percent increase for our operating costs. I wanted to present this slide to you. This is a twenty twenty five tax rate comparison between us. And some of the municipalities around us, Waterloo region municipalities and some of our near neighbors. New this year, I have added the last column, which shows what in your house. Was at our average assessment of four hundred fifty five thousand dollars and you picked it up and you dropped it. In one of these other locations, that is what your taxes would be for the year.
My. For education, out here region and both.
Yeah, so in total, we will be collecting five thousand, just over five thousand dollars in taxes upon that. However. We only get to keep twenty six percent of that. The rest of the money flows through to the school boards and to the region of Waterloo, our upper tier municipality. So that really means that only one thousand three hundred and fifty nine dollars and nineteen cents stays with us. And that's really the only thing we can control when we are talking about budget. Those were my slides that I had for this. Presentation, if there are any questions.
Is there any way I can hear copy of those? And will we make that information public? Could we post it on the.
Yes, we can. I can absolutely provide you a couple of these slides and any data information.
So I'd like to call it on my council events.
Thank you, ma'am mayor. So I have a question through you to the treasurer. So last year, we also, I think, did the three percent increase into the reserves because of this. What was necessary this year, we're doing it in a three percent as well. For how many years do we anticipate having to do that in order to kind of meet our obligations?
That depends on us and our capital forecast.
So, ma'am mayor, perhaps I'll start for the council rooms. Ten year capital forecast. Contemplates continuation of that three point. From that capital forecast. As we identified, we brought the asset management plan to you in July. There was a thirty million dollar gap between what we historically contributed. Once based on service level. Feature replacement or rehabilitation of various components, whether it be structure, buildings, rolling stock. Here, IT systems, etc. Thirty percent, if it was to continue, will erode that thirty million dollar debt. But it does not eliminate the million dollar debt in the ten year.
Seeing all three of the questions. Thank you for the report, Christina. Next is a. Did we do the motion?
No.
That is the. Council will answer motion, please.
Move by myself, second by councilwoman, then report number sixteen dash twenty twenty five received. And I counsel establish a transfer to capital reserves of a minimum of three percent. Of the twenty twenty six municipal levy over the total capital reserves allocated from taxation in twenty twenty five. To assist in funding the ten year capital forecast as follows. First, transfer to the infrastructure reserve account on one point two five percent. Second, transfer to the facilities reserve account on point seven five percent. And third, transfer to various capital reserve accounts above and beyond infrastructure and facilities at one percent. And I staff be directed to prepare and submit the twenty twenty six draft operating capital budget within a max, within a maximum guideline of a five point five increase, percent increase. In municipal tax rate after accounting for assessment group. And I staff publish the adopted twenty twenty six budget meeting schedule. In conjunction with the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six council meeting schedule on the township's website. Social media accounts as part of the ongoing public consultation and community outreach program. And at the following meetings, be scheduled to deal with the twenty twenty six budget components.
Just list the dates, okay? Just the dates.
Today, Wednesday, August thirteenth, Tuesday, November tenth. Monday, December eighth, Monday and Wednesday, January twelfth and twenty and fourteen. Monday, February the second, Monday, February twenty third and Monday, April the twenty seventh.
All those in favor. Harry, thank you. So. Next, we're doing six point two. Report number ten seventeen twenty twenty five preliminary discussion and overview, first draft of the ten year capital forecast twenty twenty six to twenty thirty five. Christina Bronx will provide a presentation. Christina, please.
Apologies, too many screens open. Thank you, ma'am mayor. What I present to tonight is a brief overview. As I get into the later part of my presentation, it will be. Discussing the individual sections of the tenure report, so we would be happy to pause at that time for questions or we can take them all at the end as council, please. Annually, we come to you twice a year to discuss the ten year capital. This is really to provide an early outline to make sure that staff is on the right track for the twenty twenty six budget. To make sure that the projects and sequencing and timing are as council wishes. This allows us to assess then projects beyond twenty twenty six and again, make sure that we are forecasting our future growth. Making sure that we are prioritizing where the needs and desires of council are. And then it also allows touch points to provide feedback to us on whether or not you're in headed in the correct direction. Or whether or not there are other questions for us. Some of the key changes in this tenure forecast are very obvious in that we have, of course, extended it one year to twenty thirty five. We have dropped off twenty twenty five, so it is the ten years from twenty twenty six to twenty thirty five. We have adjusted where we have provided more information on current rates. A lot of our rates were updated from a twenty twenty three cost to the twenty twenty five cost when those have been available. We have looked at the timing of some projects because thanks to some grants, we have looped things around this year. So we did make sure that that is now reflected in the, in the tenure capital. And you can see that from February of twenty twenty five, when we last spoke, we've actually. Increased our total campaign to a hundred and fifty million dollars up from the hundred and forty four million. The two largest areas of our capital expenditures continue to be our infrastructures, which is now sitting at just sixty point seven million dollars. And our facilities, which some minor decrease just because of the changes in the project. But is now sitting at.
Fifty five, no.
Yes. Sorry, Zoom is hiding my number on here. Yeah, so it's sitting at the fifty five million. I find it's helpful to break it down by category. Once again, you can see that fifty five million and that sixty point seven million dollars is being our largest areas. Our rolling stock continues to increase as we move towards more hybrid or greener. Options as well as just the general costs are increasing same for vehicles and rolling stock. There has been some changes in our parks and we'll discuss that when we get down to that slide. The other thing I want to highlight to you is our funding and financing models here in the township. We have strived over the past few years to not directly fund our capital program from taxation in that current year. This provides a smoother, more stable, more predictable tax rate for all of our residents. Instead, we are continuing to put that money into reserves. In this case, some of the taxation also goes towards pay down debt in later years, and I just slide about that a little later. So that the debt and the taxation or the debt and the reserves are more of that financing model, whereas our funding sources remain. Our taxation dollars, our user fees and then our ability to draw from aggregate licenses and energy loss income. As well as, of course, our parkland trust and development charges. This year, again, we have been fortunate enough to have several government grants that are known in the capital. And there is still a few wished for in the future in the later part. This allows us to actually fund just over half of our. Capital project is coming from money generated entirely within the township, which is a very good percentage. We are very fortunate to be able to use that aggregate fees. The Grand Bridge Energy and our government grants to help fund so many of our projects. The donations that we are looking and the community support for our projects as well helps to have those external items. This line brings out where we are looking to use debt to finance some of our capital. Once again, we are only proposing to issue debt on those long life assets on facilities. So in this iteration of the tenure capital, we have debt on the twin pad. The adaptive reuse of the ACC into a warm side programming. And for the phase two of the public works facilities. At our highest, our annual repayment limit is only thirty one percent of what your current annual repayment limit is. The annual repayment limit is a restriction formula set by the province. And it is a factor of your own source revenue. So as you grow as a township and the entire own source revenues than that annual repayment limit would go up. But we are not anywhere approaching our limits.
So, ma'am mayor, what this slide is supposed to show is. We don't know what the A R L limit will be in twenty thirty because it's a formula produced by the province. So we took our last known, which is the twenty four figures published by the province of Ontario. Even if we look at just using the twenty four permission, knowing you will grow in time. You're only utilizing thirty one percent what we're allowed to spend actually in year twenty twenty four. So. As our assessment base grows, that changes the formula, our A R L limit will grow accordingly. And we are today well within parameters. And as our assessment base grows and the exposure, which is our highest limit in. The twenty thirty one, twenty thirty two time period, we will be well below that marker.
The other thing that I think is important to see is that we are using our own funds to fund. Various things and it's just the timing that is a little bit different. So the taxation that you see funding. Over the next ten years, five point two million of that will go to refund debt in those later years. Once the twin pad is complete, that's the first debt and then it layers on the other projects. And then the other twenty seven point eight million is really going into our reserves to allow us to make at least thirty. Highlight the really large items in the capital. Again, our public works facility had several phases to it. Phase one, the design of the entire complex was done in twenty twenty three. We have our phase one. Building is done and we have the opening for that last year. We have pushed out the construction of the equipment facility and the new salt dome because they are partially driven by new growth. The next growth has slowed down. The timing of those has been extended. We have the major rehabilitation of the ACC slated to happen next summer. On spring, summer, fall. And then, of course, the twinning of the arena here. We awarded that construction management services as of council meeting on Monday. And then once that project is complete, we'll be able to shut down the ICE facility at the ACC and turn our minds to what that stage should be. The other thing that I just wanted to highlight is our grid projects. We have three bridges that we are looking at major rehabilitations on, starting in twenty twenty six and two in twenty twenty seven. And that is putting a large amount of our capital plan within these next few years. As always, we are looking for direction from you, our council, to see whether or not there are projects within this tenure that we should drop. Whether they should be modified and changed, delayed, extended, minimized, standard, whichever. We have not failed to meet what your desires are for that ten year forecast. We are hard looking to issue direction on that. Once again, I'd like to highlight the mid failed bridge is not in the tenure capital. That is still one we are trying to get a little more information on back in twenty twenty two. We had some replacement costs and rehabilitation costs. It continues to be a. Not forgotten, but not included because we don't know what the direction of council will be. There is the possibility to include in some aspects of the cost in our. Development charges study, assuming that we are then converting it into trail. Part of our trail. For now, it is just closed off and. There and you know, at some point you will have to make a final decision on that. But I didn't want anyone to lose sight of the fact that we are aware of that project and it is in our consideration. With that, in the last few years, I've said we've had very little flexibility. This time I'm saying we have very little uncommitted reserves. If you wish to add projects, we will need to change timings or draw projects from it. There is very few dollars in our reserves that is not committed over the ten year period. Again, with having so many large projects in the next year or two, that is really limiting our ability to be flexible. Because we need to commit and fund those dollars in the next few years. There is potential for more flexibility at the end of the tenure forecast. If we start with our fleet. Some of the items that I will highlight to you is, again, as I mentioned, we are still reviewing the hybrid alternatives. And where possible, looking for those more green items that will align with transformed W R. I note that the additional biolog vehicle in twenty twenty nine and new half ton crew prep pickup. How it works are both being funded through development charges because that is an expansion to our fleet. The winter maintenance equipment is also new and added based on the service level changes that council has previously approved. Not listed on this slide, but one other thing I do want to highlight is our fire department. Fire apparatus continues to be. Incredibly expensive. And not available locally. So you're also dealing with a foreign currency in there. We have significant challenges in the back part of the tenure capital to be able to properly replace our fire departments vehicles. While we are increasing transfers, it does not seem to be keeping up with costs. So if costs continue to escalate. We will have to make alternative decisions in the future. Are there any questions on? The rolling stock, should I pause here for discussion?
Answer, Jenny.
When you said alternative. Options and this, is that something that you could just elaborate a little bit on now? Just because I mean, I think it's still not.
See all McNeil.
So, madam mayor, for the council, so alternatives would be going with commercial cabin chassis, rather than the custom cabin chassis. There's savings in terms of the frame and cap design. The other with you, we are upgrading the second pumper. Changing it out of a pumper to a pumper that has an aerial device. That adds about seven or eight hundred thousand dollars above the price of a fridge. There are dollar savings if you just keep two pumppers. We have included the aerial device because as we see more and more of this ground related development. With the smaller side yards and the limited clearance between ease. Fire extension spread becomes critical. The ability to get up and over these structures to protect adjacencies becomes more critical. You can't do that off the ground line. Get on top of the roof, create a ventilation vault to assist with interior fire attack. But at some point, you're in a defensive position. And you need to have your device to the master stream. To provide that water coverage to limit or mitigate against fire spread to adjacencies. So if we collectively are going to have to reevaluate what that rolling stock. Is priced of and where we source it from.
See all McNeil if I may. I should do this. See all McNeil if I may. So. A long time ago, he, there was a place where he could buy huge splinters. He actually did do that for a few years, way, way back. Paul was on, Robert, Paul was cheap.
You're back on other fire departments.
That's what I meant. So I wonder if there's a way of looking at that for you, Neil.
So, madam mayor, we actually did have that originally proposed and that was in your previous forecast. And we actually started discussions with an area fire department to buy gently used. That was midlife. So it was roughly in that ten to eleven year window of time so that the residual value. Would give a meaningful return in terms of life expectancy of that rolling stock. Because of the increased costs, those larger urban centers, which were typically getting rid of their aerials in the eight to twelve year time period. Couldn't afford to replace it in that schedule and we're now holding on to the inventory either longer. Or we're keeping it in reserve because they were changing up other apparatus. So. While it's a reasonable model in this time period, at least. In this time period, at least being to the circumstances, could change by November three, five years, but in this present time period. Because everyone's being influenced by these higher. And very quickly increasing year over year costs of fire apparatus, they're holding on to them longer. Which means the residual value left in the vehicle in terms of slight, that's who they finally do discharge it. It really is not meaningful, we require purchase it in year fifteen or sixteen. Because then you're very close to that twenty year horizon. When we would be normally changing it out, so. Yes, it's a possibility in the present period, which has been explored, not attractive.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none. Uh, we have a motion then.
But if you don't find it, or if you're not okay, rolling shop.
Hold on, go ahead.
In addition with that, Madam Mayor, um, as well, um, you know, it might be, we might be reviewing some of our other corporate fleet. Vehicles to see if we can extend the term and save money in other reserves as well. It's just as of today, we haven't set a definite strategy on that too. So uh, the next section is our studies, equipment and software. Um, again, we are looking to um purchase uh greater alternatives to conform with transform W R. Where appropriate and where they actually make operational sense. Um, we are looking at our software replacement to deal with obsolescence, to deal with efficiencies, integrations and um. Allow for um a more efficient operation. And then, of course, there are significant studies in this. Um spreadsheet that then will help forecast other aspects of our tenure capital. It helps forecast um our, our roads need studies and, and other items that provide us with a better understanding of our operations as well. Are there any questions on the? Studies and employment sessions?
See none.
Section C or Schedule C really relates to um our infrastructure projects. Um, some of the items to highlight for you is the cost and timing of the bridge rehabilitation project has been amended. You have some better information on what the cost would be and what the timing should be, so that has been in there. We have reviewed a lot of our stormwater assets and provided some up updates to reflect timing of those. Uh, the timing of the transition of the gravel roads to pave is also been updated to reflect the growth patterns. As a lot of those were really coming out of development, so as that has been delayed, we've delayed some of the paving projects. And then we have also continued the ongoing traffic calling projects as well. I will pause here.
I think you can keep going, I'll see somebody turn up and then that's the answer. Council Williams.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, it's just that a question about um the bridge rehabilitation, um. Will there be more opportunities to request grants from the province? Or even the, the federal, other senior levels of, of government, this seems like a. They are a huge expense, especially for a little town street like ours.
See all again.
So, Madam Mayor, or to Captain Williams. We have for the past two years at both A M O and Normal Conferences, had delegations directly with the Minister of Infrastructure. And we have talked about the linear infrastructure system and specifically the order of magnitude. Costs of some of these bridge structures. And recently, as our last A M O delegation, uh, came with the minister. We identified that footbridge, just one singular project in isolation. Was equivalent three and a half years worth um road resurfaces. We tried to give it, uh, what it means contextually in our budget. Because, you know, if I say three million dollars, she deals with four hundred and forty four municipalities. She really doesn't understand what that context of three million needs for that singular project. So I'm trying to put it in the context of what it means for our annual resurfacing as a period of after period. Today, we have not been able to resonate with a specific project dealing with smaller municipalities. And these key pieces of infrastructure that are important, not only to our community, but the broader economic benefit. Some of these pieces of infrastructure give broader regional context. Um, and we have given examples, specifically to footbridges. And as I know, related to broader economic benefits that go well beyond. Residents or top three, so yet we're funding that initiative solely through our reserves. Um, we did for the A M O conference, uh, that commences next week. We actually changed gears because we've been before the Minister of Infrastructure five times in the last two years.
And she pats us on the head.
We. Actually asked for delegation with Minister Beth Paul, who is the.
Minister of Finance.
Minister of Finance, uh, to try and speak in the context of a budget. And what opportunities might exist as he crafts the next provincial budget for the twenty six, twenty seven fiscal year. We were not successful getting a delegation specific to that item at the A M O conference next week. But it doesn't mean the opportunity is lost. These discussions that a mayor has posted, these are both are M P as well as M D Ps, both recent and former. Um, and. These types of projects and the order of magnitude of these projects such as footbridge have always been front center. In terms of those discussions, I would suggest we'll continue uh to chant. I doubt we're going to get much traction between now and November, when we're going to be coming to council pretty much as formal. Directions of the pension packages, market force, that we best. Reconstruction, rehabilitation of footbridge, bridge. Um, bridge, road bridge in the spring of twenty six.
That's a moment.
Madam Mayor, so just looking at the um. The road reconstruction in Grand Water Road and looking at the footbridge project. And total budget for this year is forecasted seven point three million. Whereas you get twenty twenty seven, it's only three million, or twenty twenty nine, it's only two million. Is there any way we could spread this out more and sort of soften the blow for a year and have more? Sort of a little close together, seven million this year and three million the year after. You know, could we change it like five million this year, five million next year, just to spread it out, make it a little bit easier uh to fund some of these things?
See all McMillan.
So, Madam Mayor, what's critical is the funding source. So the Grand Waterloo projects that are identified, where we're actually taking existing gravel road and turning it into an asphalt surface. Is actually funded through developed charges. And is drawn funded through the developed charges of camp or its footbridge, as an example. Is funded through our reserves based on contributions we've made in the past to our infrastructure reserve. To allow for phase two of both the legacy and the bruise subdivision, there is a condition to draft approval. That actually requires a portion of Grand Waterloo Road. Generally speaking, from the Fussler, sorry, from Swan Street to Charlie Creek. To be converted from a gravel road to an asphalt surface. So that those second phases, which actually intercept the Grand Waterloo Road. Are hard toned and they can't advance phase two, bring them to market. Um, and clear the conditions to draft approval without that road being undertaken. We have been approached by uh the owner of the, uh, what would be first with the Bruce subdivision. We are actually preparing uh the subdivision agreement for those phase two lands in the present period. Uh, we're on second engineering submission reviews. Um, and they wish to be ready. By term, by the mark that improves so that they can register and put those plots on market. Technically, they can't register without the road being. So that's why that road is critical for a twenty six delivery. It actually had been our book to have, and actually it's funded in the twenty five budget. We had to delay it until the sixth as we worked through some logistics coordination with our colleagues in South Brant County. Uh, so this is a shared road with our friends in Brant County. And then there was the outlet structure, uh. Or Stormwater and Charlie Creek, which involved uh the Grand River Conservation Authority. We believe all those issues now have been resolved and this project should be taken already.
Jimmy and Cedar Creek?
No.
Charlie Creek?
Charlie Creek. Um, which basically flows into the depth. Uh. So we believe all those issues or impediments have now been satisfiedly resolved and recovered or positioned to market in November. Council gives pretty much approval uh for the allocation of funds to start the twenty six budget.
That's a moment.
Madam Mayor, so that, that's basically the, the crux of my, my question, I guess, is. With the slowing of the market and the slowing of development charge funds coming in. Does it still make sense to push forward with this road construction in twenty twenty six if the market is quieted down? Um, even though I understand they can't move forward until the road is completed. Is it really realistic that we'll be starting anything in twenty twenty six? Or should we be just pushing it back until, you know, such a time that they're actually going to be able to proceed? Pressed to invest two point two million dollars in something that's going to sit for two or three years. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, I know it's where it's kind of the funds are coming from. But there's still only one envelope of funds for development charges. And those charges will be depleted quite a bit, I found it to be quite bad if we go ahead with this. I'm just questioning the timing, um, given the current economic environment. Doesn't make sense for us to go forward with this right now, just to hold off until the market improves.
See all McMillan.
So, Madam Mayor, I, I can't say with a definitive statement that uh the owner uh will move forward. Uh, to register the plan and, and put it to market. Um, as I said, they have submitted the funds to have the subdivision agreement prepared. And have our peer reviewed consultant undertake on sign off on the engineering submission, so. They have incurred certain expenses to bring it to a certain point, they have actually filed asks that we move. Paperwork phase forward so that, I'm, I'm going to read between the lines, when and if the market approves, they're ready to go. They can't, they're going to go so far until that road is actually, or that section of the road is actually approved. So they have signaled an intent, they couldn't lay down. To bring it to a certain point and we are following that lead. Um. You know, obviously between now and November. I might have with greater certainty as to whether truly they're going to advance in a meaningful manner in twenty six. But certainly, as we speak today, based on the commitments that they have put forward and their asks. There is the appearance, but they wish to have some sort of progress in calendar year twenty six.
Kristen Williams.
Um, I will say, Madam Mayor, that um other aspect of the Brant Waterloo room, we did push out because we don't see. That initial development happening as quickly as we had created.
No further questions, Carrie, our person.
Uh, the only other thing I will just point out as we have paused here is at the. Lower section of it where the reserve balances are, um. Yes, the development charges right now are showing negative because we are very uncertain as to the timing of when you will receive them. Um, we are hoping for better information out of this year's update to the development charges. In hopes of somebody has done it first of all. Um, but that is also where we would then look at those later halves there. Um, but you will see there are years where between the aggregate reserve, between our infrastructure reserve. We don't have a lot of money sitting there waiting and that's because, again, we have those bridges in the year of the cards of the tenure. I will reshare my screen to move on. Um, the next section, Schedule D has, is the section that deals with our facilities. Um, again, as we have already talked about, these are some of the larger particular dollars in the tenure capital. Um, you can see that we have updated it to reflect the government grants we have received from charities right. Um, and updated the timing of them because some of them are a little more immediate than. We originally had planned, so that's great too. Um, and then, of course, we do look at our uh facility assessment condition reports and just the general maintenance. And we are reviewing um the regular updating and replacement of, of components and of our facilities. To make sure that we are providing the most efficient usage. Um, once again, our recreation facilities are the largest share of it. And of course, that makes complete sense when I talked about building an additional arena and rehabbing these the same.
Here we are.
There you go. Uh, Schedule E relates to our parks and our trail enhancement. Uh, we have absolutely updated the timing and sequencing of projects within that segment. Um, some of the new parks and projects that are based on growth that we have pushed out. Because again, we don't need a park if there are no houses. Um, and so that has been um updated, uh, the Cambridge Westlands. We are all assuming that that is just waiting final sign off, so those have to sit here out of our project again because that will not be us.
I accept the region, I see.
And then we are going on with, um, you know, we are still committed to enhancing our trails and introducing new trails now. Some of the timing that has changed because again, unfortunately, with the slowdown in the growth. The some of our trail enhancements are being funded out of our Parkland Trust account. And that's where we take in funds in lieu of Parkland from our commercial and industrial growth. And since those have slowed, the money coming in has slowed and we have had to slow down some of those projects as well. That does reach the end of my presentation. Um, the rest of the package shows you some of the reserve balances where we're at, where our estimates are for. We expect to be at ten twenty five and listen to everyone.
That's a challenge.
Thank you, um, through your merit, through the trigger. So in regards to the Parkland Trust, uh, starting in twenty twenty nine, the, the deficit there. That would potentially not go into deficit if the. Uh, there's more developments and that they would all of a sudden start going back up again. This is just an assumption based on current growth is what I'm interpreting what you said.
So, Madam Mayor, perhaps let me start off uh three fast with them. Heavily reliant on action move is um industrial subdivisions for these. Um, they're not moving approvals, they're not moving ahead in terms of sale of lending permits. Uh, and so the revenue from those don't exist and show, you know, the negative account. The other is the townhouse development on North Buffalo Street behind the two apartment buildings. There's roughly uh seventy two more units to be built there. And that would be cash as an example. When you look at just those four funding sources and the revenue that would be generated when they actually move forward. That then smooths out the issues that we have specifically in the mid to back end of the decade. Obviously, if this slowdown continues. Then those projects that are heavily reliant on contributions from the park trust. Would be recommended to be pushed out further in their timeline and or change their scope. And or look at all, or the funding sources in lieu of Parkland Trust or contribution from Parkland Trust.
So it's like our society's in a pause right now. There's no building, no homes, there's no industrial building, isn't everything is paused. The world is uncertain on what's going to happen tomorrow. So this is our time for caution. We have to be cautious. And who's got what? My, my, so we have to be cautious, we have to um. Get through this, this is our job now, our job is to get our society through it. And it's sometimes, as you saw in the report, we still are, um, on see all McMillan in a day. Um, how much do we show, people are paying their taxes, they are paying their water bills, we're compensating for that. And after we compensated with this year, how much will that claim that we can find the net?
Um, Madam Mayor, if you're talking about the working reserve, um, we don't, we are just self-funding it right now. We have not had to take on debt or anything like that. That is why the, the working reserve is so high is to compensate for the fact that there's timing differences. Um, but if I may also, for the purpose of the tenure capital, we did forecast ninety. Ninety thousand dollars a year coming in in Parkland Trust. Um, this year, we're coming nowhere near that. We have had very, very little come in this year, which is why. You know, we have, we think we have enough for the next few years, but if the slowdown continues, then that's where those alternative sources will have to be.
And so our job is to ride through, our job is to ride through this with our community. With our township as best we can, do what we can. And what we can't do, we have to change and juggle and reconfigure. So that we get out the next two years, you know, we're talking the next two years are critical. For us, and those I think will be our toughest two years, I hope they aren't serious. So, um, we will just have to look at it and dreams and wishes come out. They have to come out. For us to be able to sustain it until we get to, we can come back in, which is to put on a back boom. So are we, uh, do you want the motion now, Ms. Fox? Is it me ready for the motion?
That is the end of my presentation. It's this point where if council has any projects, they feel that it's been the wrong place. Or things we have missed or things they would like us to pull out, then we're happy to have that discussion.
Okay, so we have this motion for. That's an awesome, um, do you want, we do this motion after we've done some work then pulling off? What does it say? His staff submitted reconciliation to limit ten twenty five council meeting. A report on the twenty twenty six capital projects that staff seek to secure pre-budget approval for. So are we doing polling now first?
Uh, so if there are no further questions or council has no changes to be made or no.
We're not there yet.
Questions, if there's good discussions on on that, uh, then we are ready for the motion. If council wishes to discuss the plan further, then I would suggest now would be a good time.
Okay, so I think we have to get our pencils and pens out and get ready to look at the votes. And some of you already had that. Does staff have any suggestions that may might direct us to?
So, Madam Mayor, the draft forecast has been staff's first attempt. Uh, either flying front projects or pushing them out. Uh, in response to the slow economic factors and the influence it has on various observer counts. Uh, so this is what staff has been able to put together as we speak today. I'll be honest with you. We should be focusing on the first three years because those are projects that either will require some. Level of preparatory work to get ready. The reality is, as we get into budget deliberations in the new year, obviously, we'll have a little bit more information. There's been some resolution on tariffs of trade agreements that might unlock. Some of the influences to this current economic slowdown. And, you know, there could be further adjustments than have been deliberated uh on budget pay, budget fee. Uh, based on those in those pieces of information. Certainly, staff are very, very cognizant of the middle to the end periods of the forecasts. Those are very much fluid and. Depending upon how things unfold of the next year or three. Um, would be uh projects that might be accelerated, pushed out further. Or actually presented to council saying, are these core elements uh that need to be entered? So, while I always like to think of ten year forecast because it gives perspective of a longer term than some cases sequencing. There is a lot of uncertainty, especially as we look at the longer term funding strategy implications. That are attributed to growth.
That's the last name.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that's exactly why I find, uh, you know, this is great information. That's done a great job trying to. Space things out, but because this is such a fluid document, we don't know what's gonna happen in six months. We don't know what's gonna happen in three months. We don't know what's gonna happen in a year. What could stand pat today may not be what's gonna happen in a year from now, simply because the economy could change. Um, brands could change, anything can change. So that's. That's the good thing about the fact that we have a a fluid document. So I think that. Um, you you know, as my mayor said, it's all great to have your 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 wishes and wants and needs. Um, but it's no difference than balancing your household. If you can't afford them, you can't do them. And you gotta, you you know, wish for further down the line. So I think that, um, when it comes to to different. Things like even when you're looking at roll, I'm gonna use rolling stock as an example. You know, it it'd be great to say, okay, well, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna keep changing these vehicles X amount of years, but. Um, particularly if you travel a lot on stage, you'll notice that a lot of their rolling stock. Their roads look like they've had rolling stock for a long time and it's simply because they can't afford to change them. So I think that with this document, the way the way we've always treated it, the way it's been born and the way it it continues to grow. You know, it's great, looks straight on paper right now, but if it needs to change down the road, it'll change. I mean, like, we could, we could banter this. For the next three hours on what we what we could change, what looks good on paper. But it's just a difference on paper. It's, it can change next year.
Okay, so what if we looked at the twenty twenty six? Oh, Councilwoman first.
Thank you, Madam. And to kind of follow up with uh cause Councilwoman Austin's point. Um, um, the more you move things out to, the more expensive they get. So there needs to be a balance as well. Like, it might be, all right, that's not fixing rooms this year, but then next year. Next year, you know, fifty grand or seventy grand and isn't here being a giant tax increase. I, I am, I did some looking this afternoon. Just to see what, how the change even for what we caught in in February. There's been a lot of increases to costs. Um, and that's not gonna get less in the near future, so I'm. I'm hesitant to go ahead and start saying, hey, let's move this to twenty eight or twenty nine or whatever, because. And I I think that we might be not making the right decisions.
You you bring up an interesting point, except that today is not like any other day or any other year. See, that would be true, but the bits with, uh, we're looking at the bits for the twin pad. The number of companies bidding, and these are top companies that have built. Huge, huge complexes that are begging for work and they're coming in, they're coming in at really good prices. So, um. People are begging for jobs, companies, all kinds of big companies. So again, that says, do we do it now? Because it's more actually becoming more feasible now, but what do we have to work with? I think we have to look at what we have to work with. See on the hearing.
So, Madam Mayor, that's a key factor. I also wish to caution. Realistically, a number of the projects, specifically in twenty six, twenty seven. We have a heavy lift of capital projects, so there's a financial side. There's also the practical side of being able to manage and deliver the projects. Okay, uh, we have two major build projects scheduled for the twenty six, twenty seven. We've got three bridges in that time period. It's the same individual that's leading the oversight for those five projects. So at some point, we also stretch resources where we don't necessarily have the capacity. At a certain point, to provide the due diligence and oversight and coordination to ensure they stay on budget, on schedule. And the details, for lack of a better term, are properly accounted for.
So I'm making three bridges again, uh, Footbridge, Piper Street and.
Jedburg Dam.
Jedburg Dam. What if the. Nested them in in one, two and three. Is it Footbridge top one, Jedburg Dam and then Piper?
So the reports that we shared with you last year identified that all of three of those bridges. Should be done in two thousand and five. You're now moving into year four. Because we had to do the design work.
Yep, yep.
We have, this year, we're giving apartment approvals because we're working adjacent to water forces and the light. Um, those bridges were identified as acquiring intention. And once again, order management costs. Perhaps this might be an attractive time to get those bridges done. In terms of competitive business and the marketplace.
True, everything, everybody's fighting for jobs.
But our paperwork. Ready to go is also a place for all three bridges.
I was just thinking, if you did. Yeah, if you did. I'm trying to figure out the logistics of how, as you've been shutting down, probably for a while, the footbridge for a while and and uh. And uh, Jack, oh my God, what a nightmare.
So we wouldn't be shutting them down. We have to keep one lane open at all times for the Piper Street. We have no ability, I look at emergency services in isolation to get to all the homes on the west side. Of the land. We will at a minimum have one lane open, big traffic. We have to maintain a lane. So once one side is done and refurbished, then we flip to the other side of the bridge. Footbridge and uh Jedburg Dam, looking at full closures. Because we can't queue traffic, a footbridge waiting to get, I'm sorry, on Highway twenty four, waiting for the call, the green light. On one lane, so it'll be closed, which means the construction short period is slightly shorter. Because you're doing the full closure, you can mobilize accordingly. But and and with Jedburg, the bridge is so narrow. It basically is a one-lane bridge. That's why we have stop control at East of our approaches. Uh, but it would be a full closure, but because of the nature of the bridge and the span is a relatively small. Uh, the construction windows on.
So is Councilwoman Austin and Councilwoman Williams right that we don't change? Is there anything you think, do you see that we should pull on?
So, Madam Mayor, what we presented to you is the ten year forecast. We believe represent key projects, priorities based on technical work. Done by outside parties and previously presented to council. And or has generally, usually genuinely blacked out of of. Past that you have got through members of council or in discussions with community members. Um, we have specific to growth-related projects. Push projects out two or three years from all spending earlier in their versions. Based on the economic slowdown and how that's influenced both residential and non-residential development. And that's been done by two factors. One, the corresponding income revenue hasn't been generated. And or the demand for that service has been pushed out because the growth just doesn't there. Um, so the need for that infrastructure or facility isn't there. Um, so we we feel that we have put together, based on those principles. A reflective ten year forecast based on information as we know it today. We continually bring new economic information, new technical information, the lens. That's why we need at least twice a year, talk about the ten year capital forecast to make adjustments. As new information realities um available and we may fail inside, or even. The first three years. Really set the table because of the workforce plans for staff. And also how reserved largely uh funding even. And it can be a useful instrument in terms of having discussions with senior levels of government. Trying to secure our grants. Um, because we showed the need for the project on some priority basis and what role. Grant might play in terms of making it available and practical. Um, and what it means in terms of, uh, I'll call it the the long-term funding forecast for this valley. Obviously, in November. Will be before council, um, asking for pre-inflatable of certain capital delivery projects. Uh, that would be um in the twenty six budget, but some of these projects have already started. Twin Pad. We're full steam ahead now. Uh, we got the construction manager. We will be having a construction manager work with the architect to better truth out the design. See if there's further efficiencies that could be undertaken. It'll be uh an updated class B estimate. Based on our best understanding now of materials in the fall of twenty twenty five versus the spring of twenty twenty five. Steel. And a significant component of this new building has steel. Does it mean in terms of pricing? Or just mean in terms of availability in terms of meat tongue? Um, so, you know, we are moving ahead with certain projects. Um, but we'll be coming back to council in November for others. Um, and then the balance and capital items will be part of the regular budget deliberations. In the January, February uh time period.
And I'm hopeful that, um, if we have these projects in these tough times and that these companies are looking for work. That we may be more open for grants because we are ready to go with them. Because our both upper and eventual federal have said. Let's get these people working and if we give them the opportunity to work, we may get. We can be hopeful, always hopeful. Yeah, so, councilors, do you want to make any changes or a status quo? Councilwoman Austin.
Think of this part, uh, at this point, I think status quo is fine. Um, you you know, like. Do you remember when we were, was it last year or earlier this year? When when we had the the bid on the road resurfacing. And we added more projects into it because the pricing was advantageous.
Yes.
So maybe, the same maybe, when you look at the three bridges that need to be done, being the fact that Jedburg Dam. Is down to around six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You never know, we might come in with a footbridge being done, come in lower. And it's a, and and possibly be able to have that same company bid for the Jedburg Dam. Maybe move the two of them together and by the time you 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 get advantageous pricing on both. You're almost getting the Jedberg Dam done for less than half the price or better, like. Like, that option is always there, a- as long as the project is ready and the design is ready.
Okay.
So, Madam Mayor, just to pick up on what Councilwoman Austin said, by going into the marketplace early. The November tough period, we found great success this past year. Uh, and we've got good competitive pricing. Well, importantly, we also got done earlier in the calendar, you're not bumping up to that late fall period. We know last year in twenty four. There were certain contractors that were so busy in other municipalities, they couldn't complete all of their bid projects. And they got carried into this past year. Uh, he liked. Say you're gonna deliver a project in the calendar year, once the funds have been allocated, there's an expectation. So it's a double edge. Um, so we were successful this year in that regard. But to your point, when you're sitting down, late January, February time period, finalizing your budget. We will have the tender closing on the footbridge. So we'll know what is the estimate that we're carrying right now. Is actually bearing in the marketplace. And if there are some dollars that are available to us. Council may say, well, let's take project X in our infrastructure column. And see if we can that ahead, sorry, move that ahead and undertake in. Advantage of touch savings, one hand, that allow us to do a little bit more in terms of the broader infrastructure portfolio. As I said, each month, we learn more and the best litmus test. Is what the bid price actually comes in when we go through the competitive marketplace process.
That's it, that's a question.
And right now in this room, it's a crystal ball, you don't know. So, uh, but it could very well.
Be in our favor.
Good option, you know, and if it's not, we're back into the schedule, but it'll work.
Okay, so then we need the motion. Who, Councilwoman Austin, you have the motion.
Yeah. Uh, move ourselves, second my council, that F I M report number seventeen dash twenty twenty five be received. And our staff submit for consideration for November tenth, twenty twenty five council meeting, a report on the twenty twenty six capital projects. That staff seek to secure free budget approval for. That staff seek to secure free budget approval for in order to facilitate an early entry into the marketplace for bids. On long lead delivery or price sensitive projects. And then all comments received through discussion at the August thirteenth. National Council needing to be returned to staff for further consideration as part of the continuing development. Uh, the twenty twenty six budget and the associated ten-year twenty six to thirty five, twenty twenty six to twenty thirty five capital forecast.
All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. All right. Councillor Roman, please.
Move on myself, by councillor Austin, the council moved into closed meeting session at eleven ten P M pursuant to the Miss Black section. Two three nine two, discuss fifteen point one, report number C O twenty twenty five, twenty twenty five. Personal matters, but identifiable, the visual including support local board employees, labor relations, employee negotiations. So I have section two three nine two, be empty.
All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Staff, if you're walking out, taking notice.
Okay, you are good to go.
Um, so motion to come out of close, please councillor Tony.
Move on myself, second by councillor Roman, that council will be convened to open session at eight thirty eight P M.
All the, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Um, business arising from the close, uh, council has given direction to the C O, um, um, the closed session. Uh, now next we will have um, confirmatory by lock, please councillor Ross.
Move on myself, second by councillor Billy, that by law number three five eight six dash twenty five, getting by law to confirm the proceeds of the council on August thirteen, twenty twenty five. We read it first, second and third time, we finally pass, signed and sealed by the mayor clerk.
Did that all in one breath? All those in favor? Carrie. And next we, next I believe we have the adjournment, councillor Austin, please.
Move on myself, second by councillor Ron, the words proposed before this council meeting has been completed at eight thirty nine U M.
And. Thank you very much, councillor, that's it.